Thank you. Any other additional chair rec that is this counselor call?
Thank you, Mr. President. Pending in finance is Counselor 2017-24, which is appropriation of 159,500 to the Fire Department for recruit protective equipment, which I believe is an appropriation for pre-act.
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. I see Chief Barron here with us this evening. I did disseminate prior to the meeting the backup or narrative regarding this request, but as the chief's here, I welcome him to the podium. The second position.
Oh, we have a second from which is a welcome, Chief.
That quite a proud hat.
I thought they were here seeing each other.
Go ahead.
You have before you a request for turnout gear for the recruit class that we're hoping to start very shortly. The equipment that we are looking for is turnout gear, two sets for each recruit. They include the turnout pants and jackets, all of the boots, helmet, gloves, particular survival flashlight, and a protective hood. Standard now for firefighting gear is to purchase two sets of gear, but if you have each flashlight, you have two sets of gear. We've been having to incrementally have all of our firefighters have the two sets. We do that by the initial set of gear, since I've been chief, I've tried to conform to that standard, as have nearly every department in Metro Boston, forty different departments. The turnout gear itself has to be cleaned after every major incident. In the process of doing that, it places that gear out of service for a period of time. We have a standard operating procedure, I will read just a general statement from that standard operating procedure, which is a requirement of all firefighters. Firefighter protective clothing must be kept clean to ensure its proper performance. Dirty gear carries less insulation, is more likely to conduct heat and electricity, it lacks middle machining properties, and can become potentially flammable. Moreover, many fire ground contaminants are carcinogens and skin-toxin chemicals. Turnout gear needs to be cleaned regularly to prevent these problems. Soil that contaminated in salted elements are not to be brought into living or sleeping quarters, not to be brought into the home, not stored in personal containers, and not washed in home laundries or washing public laundries. This is a great departure from my initial years on the department. The cancer awareness as a causative element in firefighting is studies have borne out the fact that we have to have these sets of gear. And even early in my career, if I had a fire and subsequently went to an additional fire, after that gear was saturated, it actually conducts heat and steam, and it actually was subject to steaminess. And again, that was before the seminars. So, and again, since I started in chief as chief of the department, even half a year ago, we started on this process of making sure that each firefighter has a second set of gear. We could do that with the highest that we had and just catch enough and enable to get one in one budget to do. And occasionally, we were able to refurbish gear from entire areas in that exact way. In this endeavor, it is important that for these hires, we start them up. We hope that they have long, healthy careers. So that's the goal. And the request before you reflects that. Have you had the answer to the questions?
Does anyone have any questions at the chief? Chairman recognizes Counselor Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is not a question. This was actually wanting to commend you with all of the Quincy firefighters for what you guys do. Council de Bona, Harris, and I had an opportunity to visit the Quincy Station this past weekend. And first of all, we're grateful for the hospitality that we're at. I think it's a good thing that happened while previous to the process by the work that the department does across the city. You know, unfortunately, we have a horrific house fire in Housneck. And, you know, after that, I was talking to your team members over in Quincy about what the process is when they come back from that. You know, the gear has to come off, it has to get washed properly, they need to take hot showers. And even after that, you know, three days later, you know, one of your guys was saying that he can work out, and he can still, you know, smell that coming from his pores. I mean, it's getting all of that out of their system because of the cancer rates, when you're alarming of cancer rates for firefighters. And, you know, I just wanted to again take a moment to commend you guys for your service because, to put it to light with gentlemen, I'm also grateful that it's not an easy task that you guys do. And to make sure that you have the proper equipment, the proper gear to better serve the city, I think is really crucial. And to make sure that the train isn't trained properly in how to handle that. And I want to say not to take that gear home, and not to take that gear in form of iron gun and axe and spread those carcinogens and to spread that smoke and to spread that danger. And so, I just wanted to thank you and remember also for the hospitality, but also for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I motion to Chairman recognizes Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to elaborate a little bit as well. Chief Barron, thank you. It's Michael Plaza in the back there, Tony Bowes as well, for inviting us, Counselor Harris and Counselor Lee, this past weekend to take a look at this equipment, take a look at this, these, the gear that you have, you're looking to appropriate. I think that was, that was really important that you guys showed us what was coming to the council tonight, as well as having a nice lunch with you guys. I appreciate that, I really do. And how important-
It's circus value.
They were Italian, they were pasta, which was great. So I really enjoyed that, with some nice salads, nice meatballs, and sausage, Italian way. But, but you know, for the twenty-eight new candidates coming in, and how important that our fire department is starting to get back to where we were before. There were some programs that were cut over the years, and we're just trying to get back to where we are, very similar to the Quincy Public Schools, where I talk a lot, getting back to the stages of where we need to be at when we're doing all this redevelopment with this Quincy Center. I want to note that I applaud you guys for the terrible tragedy that happened in Housneck as well. Near and dear to my heart that the Paul Powers family, that the grandmother and the nineteen-year-old teenager passed. It's something that you, talking to some of the firefighters, you train very hard for this, and when you get out to that site, you just don't know what's going to happen at times. And that was the articulation of the story that was given to me, that sometimes you just don't know what you're going to, what you're going to be put into until you get there. And to see the different stations come in together and, and you know, how important that is to think about, really, for a second here, that how important fire departments are, how important police departments are, that we need to be able to give you the resources to do your job. And unfortunately, there's money, there's costs, there's funding involved in this, there's money involved, there's allocations of it. And people sometimes, when we're getting ready to go into that budget season, some people sometimes don't realize that we have to put these appropriations in place to give you the proper resources to run your fire unit. And without these type of things, you can't wait until they're to a point you can't use the stuff. You have to wait some while, you have that second set of gear. And I wanted the public to understand that, and how important it is when we're looking at other different trucks and appropriations for different equipment, that how important it is, is you can't wait until it's already broken down. It's kind of too late, we have to outfit them and bring in a new cycle of things. So, I'm very on board for this appropriation. I want to thank you guys for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Counselor Finn. Acting President. Chief, always a pleasure to see you, and thank you to the guys. I just, I'm very shortly, very quickly echo the thoughts of my peers that were with me. One thing that really impressed me about the folks and you folks is you don't realize that not only, not only what you do on a day-by-day basis, but also the fact that you're, when you found federal money, eight hundred and fifty million, I think I was told, eight hundred and fifty million dollars, I mean, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, sorry. I wrote it down.
Lottery, lottery.
Yeah. Tonight's fun, right? Eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars taxpayers don't have to pay out of their pocket through their property taxes. And I can only say is, if every department was able to do things like that, where it made the department better, made service better, we would be even better, better than where we are. But I was really impressed with what I saw the other, the other day. I applaud you. Thank you so much for what you folks do on a day-to-day basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Did want to take a moment to recognize again, to applaud all your records, the firefighter team and firefighter close. Thank you guys for turning out your discipline. Appreciate it. Appreciate your service that's-
Mr. President.
Chairman recognizes Counselor Palucci.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, you voted, supported us. I think it's, you know, well, well-spent money. I did just want to say, I also went to the fire station by myself. I was given a bag of plain M&amp;M's that designated me a fire fighter. So, it wasn't even peanut M&amp;M's, it was plain M&amp;M's. So I don't know what DeBona and the rest of them got, but apparently, I'm a much cheaper date. Chief, the numbers of guys that we're adding, what's the, how many guys are we adding this turnout gear for new, new folks coming out of the department? How many?
We're looking at twenty-seven recruits in this class.
And how, and that's a tremendous number. How many guys do we have on the job now, in the department?
Right now, we have a hundred and ninety.
Hundred and ninety, so you mean you're talking, I'm trying to do the math real quick, I can't do it, but yeah.
Seventeen.
No, but I mean, it's, it's what, like twelve, fifteen percent, somewhere in there that you're, that you're kind of bringing aboard compared to, so. And I'm sure that that reflects some retirements, some additional positions, as Counsel Harris said, federal funding. When will these guys, when will they be onboard? When will they be on a truck in the house?
On trucks, sometime around mid, mid. Looking at roughly eleven, twelve week training again.
And when did you start the process of onboarding these guys?
We started in, in May of last year.
So full year to get them onboard?
Right. By the time we work through the civil service process, exhaustive background checks, it is quite big.
Right. And we've, we've had this same discussion with Chief Keenan, and I think, I want to say the last time we discussed with him, it was more like a year and a half between getting, opening the list, getting someone into the academy, getting them out, and then getting them on the street. It's like a year and a half. So, you know, we're used to, we're used to when we vote on the budget, we expect, you know, everything just happens, and okay, we add a position to the fire department, and we add a position to the police department, a couple here and there, as we've been doing in alternating years, that they're going to be on, but it takes some time. So I'm glad to see that we're, we're doing what we need to do to bring folks onboard and replenish the ranks and beef up the department on a consistent basis. So, thanks, keep up the good work.
Thank you, Counselor.
Chair recognizes Counselor Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to firefighters level seven ninety-two. I can get chips or M&amp;Ms. My engine six visit, I'm a frequent flyer to down there. But I want to say thank you to the representatives of the evening here in the audience who are always so willingness, willing to answer any questions, to reach out, to advocate. And what you do goes far beyond the day-to-day expectations of what your job is. You're out there, out in the community, and the philanthropy that the firefighters who are new do in this community is tremendous. You're always advocating for something, whether it's, you know, silver men in my war, did it busy bees, breast cancer walk, firefighters doing right there with them. They did it in the band, in cabins. They're just constantly, whether it's related to life, something they're always, you're always out working in the community, working for the betterment of the community, and just grateful for the work, charitable work you do in addition to the work you do, obviously, in the department. So, the other thing is, clearly, it's time, Chief, for a fire ops training. Counselor Crowe and I are the only two around the well that are a love of your fire ops training program, which was very great for us to get that, hands-on understanding of what it is, what you endure, and obviously, nothing like a real life scenario, but my gratitude of the effort of the Powers family when I spoke with Michael, the survivor, you know, he says to me, he's worried about the neighbors that witnessed the incident, he's worried about your firefighters and the emergency responders who responded to the incident. And very tragic loss in Housneck, but I am grateful for all the work of your department and their response and that. We have the services for the family this week, it's been very hard for the family, but we do have some funds set up for them as well. So I just, thank you, Chief. We'll be supporting your appropriation, making sure everyone has the gear and paying to keep their strong response.
Seeing no further discussion with clerk, please call Roll.
Call K.
Yes.
Call K. Roll.
Yes.
Call K. Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFara.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Palucci.
Yes. Are there any other additional reports of committees this evening? Seeing presentation of petitions, memorials, or monstries.
Chief, thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm just kidding, she did it.
There hasn't been active calls over the year, you should.
That was the longest presentation, and one of the surest votes we've had.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for what you do.
Chair recognizes again Counselor Crowe for presentation petitions, memorials, or monstries.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It is, you know, a great sadness, I mean, great sadness. You know, I recognize the passing of, not only a dear friend of mine, but, you know, a son of Quincy, Kevin Zalucci, alumni of our class in ninety-eight, with the I School. I think that was, I don't know. Just, just an unbelievable, you know, human, quite honestly. You know, a family man, husband to his wife, three kids, Stephen Declan and Paul. Kevin was just a, he was a stand-up guy, you know, if you knew, to know him was a love. You know, he, he was in that tragic accident back, Jesus, three years ago on the yard away. He currently found himself in a wheelchair and fought hard for, you know, three years, and lost him this week. I can't say enough about the kid. Like I said, if you, if you know him, then you know exactly what I'm talking about. I would ask if we could, you know, keep that, or dedicate the meeting in memory of Zalucci family. And I know that his plan services for Thursday night, four A at Sweeney's, so certainly keep that family in your purse. Like I said, they were, they were just, give us just a giver and a giver, and just a great, great guy. So we lost a, we lost a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Palucci.
Thank you. I have two, two things I wanted to remonstrate. The first is, I wanted to, just to the mayor's representative again, suggest that there should be some sort of presentation before this body about newspaper reports that the city entered into an agreement with the party about the determination of the Quincy Hospital. I read, over a month ago, I asked over a month ago, the administration to make a presentation to us of four million dollars about the revert clause. I know it's not my ward, and I know the councils who do represent that area have far more intimate knowledge of what's going on than working hand-in-hand with the neighbors in the administration. But from a councilman who does represent that area, I, I do think that something, again, I request a second time, that something should be before this body about that revert, whether the agreement has been signed already or not, I don't know. Whether four million dollars has come into the city's possession or not, I don't know. There should be some sort of discussion before this body about that. I trust this water, if you found a way to spend it, that would be before us, but I'd like to know the beginning part of money. And the second, just want to recognize that it is Counselor Bill Harris's birthday today. We wish him a very, well, some of us, but we wish him a happy birthday, and many more. Happy birthday.
That explains a great deal, you know, Russia to get home for gay. Again, all serious.
Why do you explain that?
I don't. I probably inappropriate on my part.
No.
Certainly serious issue that. Chair, Chair recognizes Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Ronald. Jim, in the vein of remonstrate, I just want to touch on an issue that I've been dealing with in Ward Two that greatly affects the folks that I represent living at Thousand Southern Oderity. And, you know, I had the opportunity, as I do frequently, to pay a visit to, to the building on Super Bowl Sunday, and, you know, being a frequent flyer down there, I had known that it is going through a massive renovation, transformation, both internally and externally. What I always found odd was that the kitchen was, seemed to be the point of just constant delay. It was brought to my attention at that Super Bowl party that there was little to no communication about when it would be reopened, and also the rumor around towns that the city of Quincy were the ones holding up the kitchen at One Thousand Southern Oderity to be open. And as many of you know, it's consistently raised issues up here that affect our senior citizens, and I'm not shy about opening my mouth when I, when I feel like situations being taken advantage of, particularly when it relates to the city of Quincy's senior citizens. So I started to do some investigation. I've always tried to be respectful of the fact that it is a privately-run business, but when I feel the, you know, the emotion coming out of, you know, my constituents that there's not any, any insight, I take grave issue with that. So I started to do some digging and connected with the property management company who really didn't provide you with much of anything outside of a contact down in Washington DC who was overseeing the subcontract. I subsequently scheduled a conference call with Commissioner of Inspection Services, Jay Duka, so that we could clearly explain that the city of Quincy was not the obstacle to this kitchen being reopened. I had asked the individual down in DC for a commitment to a timeframe of when we were going to reopen this kitchen. He was non-committal. I said, I understand, I'm putting you on the spot, but you'll hear from me in three days. Called him in three days, no response. Two days later, got a, I got a response that the kitchen is going to be opened on March tenth, and they'll also be resolving the issue with the mail, which is a positive. I don't see it as just a kitchen, because to know One Thousand Southern Oderity is to love One Thousand Southern Oderity. I mean, kitchen is a focal point of, of community, quite honestly. So, I'm very unimpressed with the approach that the property management had taken to move this issue forward. Fortunately, I'm able to report, like I said, a positive, that through advocacy, we'll see a resolve on March tenth. I have sent a letter to residents. Apparently, they didn't attach the message from a public building inspector, which I guess we'll, we'll deal with that later. But Counselor DeBona had also hosted a little coffee hour, and there, and the same issue was raised. So, I just don't understand, I try to be sensitive to the fact that it is a privately-run business, but there was just no forward progress being made, which is, which is mad. And the people at Thousand Southern Oderity deserve better than that, and I hope that this acts as, I don't know, I hope it acts as a case study of what not to do going forward. But again, I just wanted to remonstrate on the fact, and let the folks know who live there, that I am very on top of this, and will manage this to a, to a successful outcome, to the best of my ability. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to echo the sentiments of Counselor Crowe, I let him take the lead on this, being the Ward Counselor of Thousand Southern Oderity, but his constituents are also my constituents. And having that coffee hour, and having longtime residents come to be going, it was supposed to be six weeks for this kitchen, and it's six months later. My month dropped, and month dropped. And I know it's a private entity, it's a private, privately property management company, but I'm going to speak up to it. And these are people that I've had a relationship with through my school committee days, and into being a counselor at large. Got many phone calls prior to that. And I understand they're going through a redevelopment over there, with a million dollars of increasing and making the place better. But when you start to take more funding, and you increase the rent over there, and then you pull back, and you don't give them this cafeteria, that's a problem. Some residents at Thousand Southern Oderity, other senior housings, that's the one place or one area that they're going to go. They're going to come out of their room, they're going to come down to the cafeteria, possibly use the kitchen, and they're going to go back up to their, their apartment, or their studio apartment. And that's going to be what they do for the day. They go down there for a social entity, and they go back. Sometimes they don't leave the property at all, and they're taking that away from them for now six months. It's something that I raised with Counselor Crowe and said, you take the lead on this. And I'm glad he, he spoke about this tonight, and I'm going to jump on board with saying that we just need to get this kitchen up and running, and it would really help out all the seniors over there. And they, they sometimes, when they weren't getting the answers from the property management, they were coming to us and asking us, what can you guys do? Well, we're going to do something. And I'm, I'm very happy that we're looking for a March tenth opening date. Hopefully, that's about two and a half weeks about. And hopefully, it doesn't hit the lay-down road. It's the winter time, too. They don't want to leave the property as much as, you know, their summer months. This is an entity that needs to be addressed, so with that, Counselor, Chairman Finn, I thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no more presentations, petitions, memorials, or monstries, motions, waivers, and resolutions. Seeing the scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. So, Chair recognizes Counselor Crowe.
I just need to know, maybe the collective committees are, rather, could help me with this. When is the next city council meeting?
Six.
And Counselor Forrest, you have an ordinance committee scheduled for six-thirty. We have some issues pending in finance on monitoring. It makes sense to go at six and transition to you at six-thirty, and then anything you own covering finance, we can cover subsequently in the courts committees. That number's most old, so I know six is nearly started. Yes, okay. Yeah? All right. We'll go three, six, at six. Do you get that?
Counselor, you're all set, related. You've got everything scheduled already.
Right.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Any other scheduling? Certainly entertain a moment.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned. Counselor, you're all set related. You've got it from the schedule already.
Right.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Any other scheduling? Seeing that we can certainly entertain a motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.